Can't hand this one in yet because we haven't finished it.
Yeah, but I put my prep time in.
Well, I don't want to be fraudulent.
I don't care. I just signed it. And so will you.
Good evening. Welcome to the February 22nd, 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 lot of twos. Meeting of the Town of Victor Planning Board. We'll start with the Pledge to the Flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. States of America. The flag is held. And the nation is under God. Individual.
Not quite in unison on that one.
One of our veterans.
Actually see what the people look like for change. It's kind of nice.
We have two meeting minutes to consider, both in January, January 11th and January 25th, 2022. Everybody had a chance to take a look at it and any questions or comments? If not, I think we could probably do one vote for both. All in favor? Is somebody going to move them?
I'll move.
Al?
I'll second.
I'll move. Scott seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. No correspondence? Dave's not here. Any other boards? Nope, but Kim is here.
Thanks, Ernie.
Okay, you're welcome.
Your next meeting will be March 8th, starting with a public hearing for Bristol's Garden Growing Greenhouses at 7432 State Route 96. Applicant is requesting approval to construct four greenhouses 24 feet by 144 foot long, 14 foot high, and five greenhouses at 24 feet by 120 foot long and 14 foot high for growing flowers and vegetable plants. Second public hearing will be for Delta Sonic Car Wash at 7463 State Route 96. Applicant is requesting approval to demolish the existing building and construct a 13,914 square foot interior detailed building and a 10,257 square foot exterior building car wash and prep putt. And your third public hearing will be for South Gate Hills Phase Two. Actually, that won't be a public hearing. That's just a new application for a final subdivision on East Victor Road. Applicant is requesting approval to construct 15 lots on 10.14 acres under the clustering provisions. And then any carryovers from tonight.
Thank you. Legal notice for the public hearings appeared in the Daily Messenger along with under review signs having been posted on the subject parcels. Postcards were mailed to property owners within a minimum of 500 feet from the location for the initial public hearing date of each application. For applications carried over, please refer to the Planning and Building Office. In regard to public hearings, speakers are requested to limit comments to five, three minutes and will be asked to conclude comments at five minutes. Our first one is Dish Wireless at Benson Road, 01 SU 2022. This is zoned limited development district. Owner is the Town of Victor. Tax map number 6.00-1-1.120. Applicant is requesting approval to replace equipment on an existing wireless facility. Step right up.
Good evening. My name is Richard Zajak representing Crown Castle on behalf of Dish Wireless regarding the application involving installation of antennas and ancillary equipment on that existing cell tower. More specifically, Dish Wireless is proposing to install three new antennas at the 80-foot level of the existing 100-foot monopole. Dish is also proposing to install a five-foot by seven-foot ground equipment pad. No tower height increase or ground compound expansion are included with this scope of work. Does classify as an eligible facilities request under Section 6409 of the Rules of the FCC.
Okay, before we have any further comments, I forgot to do the announcements. So the emergency exits are to the left and right. It says emergency exit only on the side of the door. Restrooms are just outside the entrance door and to the left. Be sure to sign the attendant sheet at the back of the meeting room even if you are a developer or are presenting an application. There are business cards at the back table next to the sign-in sheet to take with you with the email address and phone number for the planning department. Also on the back table is a copy of the resolutions that will be read tonight along with the agenda. Please turn off or put your cell phones on silent. If you need to take a call, please take it out in the hall. And please, it goes for all conversations. If you need to talk to somebody, please take that out into the hallway as well. Hey, anybody from the public have any question or comment about this application? Over here still open?
Yes.
It is. Okay, will entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Al moves.
Second.
Joe moves. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. I've got a...
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
You said you're substituting three antenna for one. Is that, did I understand you correctly?
No, this is a new installation. Dish Wireless doesn't have any antennas up there currently.
There's nothing up there at this point at all?
For Dish Wireless, no, there's not. So this will be a new installation of three antennas.
Is there an antenna there now?
Yes. Yeah, there's antennas there now. They're not occupied by Dish Wireless. They're not their antennas, so Dish wishes to put three antennas on this existing cell tower. The cell tower is owned by Crown Castle.
Okay.
And Dish Wireless is looking to lease space on the tower to put their antennas up.
So you're hanging on an existing tower. Is that right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Else have anything?
No, no question.
We have a resolution. This is for Dish Wireless at Benson Road. Today's date, 2/22/22. Application number 01 SU 2022. Whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, and there are 11. Therefore, be it resolved that the application of Crown Castle USA Inc., agent of Dish Wireless LLC, site plan entitled Dish Wireless at Benson Road, drawn by Hudson Design Group LLC, received by the planning board January 7, 2022. Planning board's special use application number 01 SU 2022 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. Number one, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. And ongoing conditions are number one, that the site plan comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Two, that a building permit be obtained before construction begins. And be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. A motion?
So move.
Joe Limbeck moves. Second?
I'll second.
Scott seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Next item is Bristol Gardens, which is adjourned until the next meeting. And as well as the next one, which is Delta Sonic Car Wash, also tabled until the next meeting. Next is Lightcom's Parking Expansion and Shed.
I'm going to excuse myself for that one.
Okay, Scott is going to recuse himself. This is 7323-21 State Route 251, 01 SP 2022, zoned commercial light industrial. Owner is 7321 Victor Mendon LLC. Tax map 15.00-1-9.111. Applicant is requesting approval to construct eight additional parking stalls to create a total of 14 parking stalls to serve the new use of the building. Six additional stalls are shown on as land banked for future needs. Also requesting approval for a shed on site to store seasonal equipment.
Hi, I'm Bob Jacobson with Lightcoms. And the building that we purchased was primarily a warehouse when we purchased it, so there were only six parking spaces. We are going to be having more than six employees working out of the building. So we've hired engineering to design eight additional spots that we would put in over the next month or two, weather permitting. And then on advice from our engineer, he also banked six more just for future growth to get them on the record right now. So the engineering work was already done for both. We also need to put a shed just for, during our inspection for the certificate of occupancy. The previous owners left a snow blower there. We're advising us like snow blowers and gas cans should not be in our primary building. So we have a shed, a prefab shed that's going to be delivered. And after talking with the code enforcement, it's going to be on the backside of the circle to make sure we're 100 feet away from the building.
Okay. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Board, anything? Joe?
No, it seems pretty straightforward to me.
Al?
It seems pretty straightforward, so I have no real issues other than do you have any other dimensions, height with depth of the shed? Just to, I mean, I think we all like visually understand what you're intending, but just want to make sure that it doesn't end up being something.
Yeah, we submitted the drawings of the shed. I'm trying to remember. I think it was 12 by 24 feet.
Okay.
I remember right.
And height-wise?
It's probably, I would guess, 10 feet at the edge. It's a peaked roof. It's got nice vinyl siding, windows, doors.
Okay, that's it. No other questions.
Okay.
And Scott had to recuse himself, so, and I don't have any further comments either. A motion to close the public hearing. Do we do that?
I'll move.
Go moves.
I'll second.
Don't leave me hanging. Okay, we've got a resolution. Lightcom Parking Expansion and Shed, 7321 State Route 251. Today's date, 2/22/22. Application number 01 SP 2022. Whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, and there are eight. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Robert Jacobson's site plan entitled Lightcom Parking Expansion and Shed, drawn by Professional Engineering Group dated December 2021, received by the planning board January 19, 2022. Planning board application number 01 SP 2022 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. One, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. Two, that the comments in the letter dated February 4, 2022 from LaBella Associates be addressed. And three, that the comments from the code enforcement officer dated January 27, 2022 be addressed. Ongoing conditions. One, that the site plan comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Two, that a building permit be obtained before the construction of the shed. And be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Al moves.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We get the letter. Scott, where is he? Where'd he go? There he goes.
Where we learned it on the zoning board?
The seminar last year. But you don't have to leave. Okay? Hey, next is Valantown Meadows, 7241 Valantown Road. Owner Philip Freund. It's 101 PS 2022, zoned residential two. Tax map 1.02-1-21.1.000. Applicant is requesting approval for a clustered subdivision of a 28.5 acre parcel into eight individual lots ranging in size from 1.58 acres to 5.87 acres. The property is currently divided by Valantown Road with an existing house on the south side of Valantown Road and existing barn structure on the north side of Valantown Road. This will be the second step in a three-step process for a major subdivision. The sketch plan was acknowledged complete January 11, 2022.
Good evening, Brennan Marks, Marks Engineering, the design engineer for the project. As you guys are aware, we've been in front of the board with a sketch plan. We've taken account some of your advice, but I'll just give a little background on the project to start. It's a 28.6 acre parcel. It is currently owned by Comarke Holding. It's not owned by the Freund and family anymore because it's been purchased since the application was placed. So it's the, application is to divide the parcel into eight lots, four of them being building-approved lots along the frontage of Valantown Road on the north side and also the south side of Valantown Road behind the existing house. The remaining lots in the rear, which is five, six, and seven, we're not seeking building lot approval at this time for those lots. The lots are focused in the grass areas. We're minimizing disturbance on the woods and the steep slopes and the stream that bisects the north side of the parcel. With, and we're preserving those with a conservation easement, as you can see in the shaded area, as well as a 75-foot stream buffer per the town code. We've received comments from this board during the sketch plan regarding the site distances and safety entrances and whatnot. And we've also received comments from the town code enforcement officer, the fire, coordinated fire service review, the historian, and a few others from the town, and the town engineer. We've addressed some of these, we've addressed these comments received, both by the application that was originally submitted as well as two response letters written back to the planning board, one on February 18th, which was Friday last week, and then also one as of today responding to the town of engineers' comments. Most of the comments received are pretty minor in nature. We have provided the truck turn movements and diagrams showing the fire apparatus being able to access the site, turn around, and adequately maneuver the site for fire protection, which is all of the lots. We've also demonstrated the, or we responded back to the historian, which was discussing the keeping of the barn and the existing house lot on the same, however they're bisected by Valantown Road, which we feel is, in our opinion, a safety issue for someone trying to cross the road from the house to the barn. And also we feel that the barn would be better kept with a newly constructed house next to it and have more use out of it. And the town historian has agreed to our comments that we provided. We have not heard back from the fire, coordinated fire service review. The other comments we received, the conservation board is in favor of the project. They have very much liked the layout we provided and the minimizing disturbances to the wooded, steep slopes and stream area. So, and they've only had one comment, which was limiting the amount of angle points in the conservation easement to make the, to limit commute confusion in the future. We've done that to the best of our ability while protecting the woods. We do request a waiver from the planning board for four houses on a shared driveway, which is lots, or should I say four properties on a shared driveway, which is lots three, four, five, and six. We've also started coordinating review with the Bonora County Water Authority. There is ample pressure at the road to serve these houses. I've spoke with the town engineer and we've, I've sent back a letter redressing some of his concerns. And I, I mean, if Wes would like to speak about the comments they received, he can. And again, we're requesting a eight-lot subdivision with four lots being buildable. Requesting preliminary subdivision review or approval.
Wes, any comments on this one?
Yes, thank you. So the application submitted is, there was a lot of information in the application. I thought it was a very good submission for a preliminary subdivision application, including a document dated January 12, 2022 from Gene Pellet from Environmental Resources regarding the wetlands on site. There is documentation that there are no New York State DEC wetlands on the project site. However, there are three federal wetlands, and none of those federal wetlands extend out into the sites, open field communities where development activities are proposed. So that's helpful in kind of assessing any wetland impacts from this project. So, and we did issue a letter dated February 18th with a number of comments on the septic design. And the applicant has had the opportunity to respond to this letter. We haven't taken an in-depth look at it, how their response, yet. We've got some comments on stormwater drainage and then the common driveway waiver, which the applicant specified. Fire department requirements for the driveway and asking for a detail for the proposed common driveway as well. One thing, we are taking, I have Wade in the LaBella office. He's going to be taking a look at the site distance just to assure that we don't have any further concerns with the site distance of the proposed driveways. We did, we have noted and reviewed the site distance study that you provided. That was helpful. The one thing I would like to ask on, with regard to Lot Two and the septic, you've got the expansion area kind of at a different location from the septic expansion area in a different location, kind of uphill from where the proposed septic is going to be. And, and it seems like that might require some form of pump from the, from the septic tank if that expansion area, area ever gets used. And I guess we were wondering, is it possible to shift or adjust your site plan for Lot Two a little bit so that the expansion area is kind of in close proximity to the septic leach field? It's not anything you need to answer tonight?
Yeah, I'd be glad to speak about it a little bit, though.
Yeah.
We have designed the septic systems for four bedroom units, so the, the expansion of the systems might be very limited. And it's not uncommon for us to show an expansion area in a different remote area, which may require further design work or maybe further testing, as long as we reserve that expansion area on the site without structures or driveways. The DOH is, that follows the DOH Appendix 15 guidelines.
Okay, all right. So another comment that LaBella often comes up with, and I think we're not quite in the same, I don't, I don't want to say predicament. That's not the right, that's not the right term, but, so they're asking to create three lots that are going to be subject to further planning board review. And sometimes when we have an applicant come to the planning board and they haven't done any soil testing for, you know, deep hole test, perk test, then we kind of, you know, put things on hold and say, well, we really need that information. Well, the applicant, the design professional has provided soils information. LaBella has witnessed perk tests and deep hole tests out there for those three lots that are proposed to be, you know, further, subject to further review by the planning board. So I don't think that's going to be too, too difficult to overcome. It's just a little bit of a detail we can address in the, in the resolution and some notes on the plans. So that's all I have right at this point.
Thanks, Wes. Anything from the board?
Sure. I got three things. First, Wes commented on the comprehensiveness of the plan, and I just wanted to comment. I learned a lot about the, the area from the archaeological study. I thought that was pretty neat. I'd never seen it broken down like that before, so thanks for that. Regarding the, the four houses on the shared driveway, how is that driveway going to be maintained? Is that via an HOA or?
So it's going to be maintained via a highway, or no, sorry, private road maintenance and access agreement. Basically, the four houses will be bound by the deed to maintain an access point, that driveway, and keep it up to code.
Will they each be required to contribute to plowing and maintenance?
We have a sample highway access and, sorry, I say, shared driveway access and maintenance agreement that we can provide to the board. It's been used on other projects in the past.
Okay. And then my final comment is, I've driven by the site a few times now, and while I haven't gotten out of the car, I've stopped and looked at the barn. Babette noted that it appeared to be about, excuse me, 1850s vintage. And I think at the last meeting where we discussed this, it was mentioned that the gaming property owner would be responsible for whatever use was there. Do we know what kind of shape the building is in now? It looks a little rough from the outside, is why I ask.
It's an old barn, right? There's no joke of that. It's, it's an old barn. It's got a new roof on it. Structurally, I was able to look at the structure and notice that it was not failing or structurally going to collapse. It's, but it's an old barn that needs some maintenance that we hope that the new owner of that property would put into it.
Just from, from my perspective, if I were the gaming property owner, I would be wary of a pig in a poke. I would not want to inherit a problem. And it might benefit you and the gaming property owner if there was an engineering study done and whatever repairs or whatever certification could be provided to the new homeowner. You know, we've got a structure that's, well, I can't do the math, 150 years old or 175 maybe. And there's an opportunity to make sure that it's going to stand for another 100 years or so. So it might be best if we took a look at it beyond what an untrained eye can see to both benefit the town and the gaming property owner. If that makes, you see where I'm getting at?
Yeah, I'm sure that any savvy buyer would have that interest to have an inspection done on the barn and some type of a certification structure. But also the, a prospective buyer would find interest in that barn as it's an old 1850s timber frame barn, which is actually very classic, and you don't see a structure like that. It's not very common nowadays. So it may be advantageous for a buyer to buy it for that reason, but also the savvy buyer may have interest in inspection and certification by an engineer.
Okay. We're good. Thank you.
What if you don't get a savvy buyer?
I can't control the market and the people that are buying houses out there.
Scott?
There are a lot of unsavvy people out there. That's where Ernie's coming from. I just had a question, a couple of questions. One is, are you creating all seven lots at this time or all eight lots at this time?
Yes, we're going to go for final subdivision if preliminaries approved for all eight, yes.
So it's subdivision for all eight, but then effectively site plan approval for just the ones that are shown?
The four, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, there's, not knowing how the market would react to the sale, some of those frontage lots may purchase the rear lots, too.
Yep, okay. And relative to that, and how do you, how will you be treating then the utilities that serve those rear, rear lots? Will you be putting in the utilities, the electric and the gas and the water while you're putting the driveway in for the frontage lots or just, are the frontage lots going to just, oh, wait a second, maybe I'm going to answer my own question. It looks like you're tying in independently so the, so utilities aren't going through that area until I guess you're ready to construct in the rear.
That's correct.
But then your common driveway will be put up pretty good.
Any damage to the common driveway have to be repaired by that lot.
Okay. Those are all my questions. And I would say it's a nice layout.
Thank you.
Al?
No questions.
Wes, do you have any further comments?
Not right now.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak, ask questions? Step up, please.
I'll go first while you argue about it. I'm, I'm, I mean, Aldrich. I mean, Aldrich, representing the historic advisory committee. And he did reference Babette. She contacted me saying that she understands the logic about separating the barn from the house. I personally think that barn and the house have been on the opposite side of the road forever. I don't know how much of a safety hazard that is, but our wish is to preserve the barn because it's 1850. It's old. And we don't want it to disappear from the town. We've had some barns go down in the last few years that were unauthorized, but they were torn down without our knowledge. So we're wondering if something can be done to ensure the preservation. Could a covenant be put on the deed of the new lot that's formed? If they're actually, if you're going to let them sell it separate from the house that's there. It's around 1850. That's old. We'd like to preserve it.
I think that's a question.
I went out and looked at it with Babette, and there's, there's some things that need attending to, but I'm not an engineer. I don't know how much that would cost. But I would think whoever buys the lot that has that on there should be well aware and be told what it, what it would cost them or at least what their responsibilities are and that they can't just tear that down, that there needs to be some protection there. can't just tear that down, that there needs to be some protection there. So that's our committee's stance, and I hope you take that into heart and try to preserve our, one of the few barns left in Victor that's old.
Well, that's a question for the, the town attorney, and I will pass that along and get his comments.
Okay, thank you.
They were both built by the same, same barn?
Which, which barn?
The one next door.
The one next door.
They were both built by the same family.
The one that just fell in the old bear.
I'm not familiar with that.
Well, uh, comments are going to be made, please step up to the microphone. Otherwise, we won't be able to get it on the record, and the record will not be complete.
Oh, I missed that one. We want barns that are old preserved.
That.
Francis Rose, what else you got to have? My information, what else you got to have? I gave you my name, what else I got to give you? Is that it?
That's it.
All my comments?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Now, the barn that we're talking about, the lean-to just fell down with their last storm.
Mr. Rose, could you, could you just speak into the microphone so that we can get it for the record?
That's not going to work.
It won't work.
Because I won't be able to hear it when I type, and I won't be able to get any of your comments. There, perfect.
Was the microphone working?
Well, I gotta look at him.
I gotta look at you.
Anyhow, that barn, the one before that one, they were built by the same family, both of them. They were identical. The one that's still, the one that she's talking about and you talking about, the lean-to fell down a long time ago. This past snowstorm, the lean-to just fell down on what we call Keisel's barn, which now belongs to Fred Rinaldi. Okay? What you need to do is keep, you can buy some of that lumber from, from Fred Rinaldi, from that lean-to, to replace the boards that are gone, because that barn will stand. It's got a new roof on it. It's already been reinforced on the sides with concrete. Okay? So that barn is pegged together, just like Valentine Hall. It ain't going anyplace as long as there's a roof on it. All right, now to get back to your development here. I see you took my advice and moved the driveway for the, one, uh, driveway up there by my sister's property, which is on the east side. Look it up, okay? Now, as I've been thinking about it since the last meeting, all the way from my sister's east line all the way to High Street, Town of Victor, raise that road up. Now, I'd like to see the town would approve, take that driveway that you got for those four houses, come right across the creek, put a nice bridge covered in, connect to that driveway there by the barn, and that would be your safest spot to get out of there. I know, because I've been working those two fields, and I've been going in and out of them. And that top one with the four houses is a problem. Cars are coming not 40 miles an hour. If they're doing 60, they're, they're going faster. Okay? And for those other, are you tearing the house, is the house, the original house being tore down, the house that's there?
Our intent is to-
You're going to keep the Sears and Roebuck house, huh? Because the original one burnt down years ago, and that's the Sears and Roebuck house. Yeah, keep that house. But where that driveway is, is very dangerous also, unfortunately. I don't know if the town will allow it, but put another bridge across that creek, connect it to the other driveway by the barn. Because then you can see to my place, you can see to my sister's place for that bend. Because I don't have much problem coming out there by the barn. I have a problem at that other one. And that's right on the curve of that bend, at the apex of it. And I've told the Town of Victor that they raised it, they maintain it. So, I'm up this high at my property, when it used to be level to the ground, and I make them mow that bank. I make them come into my lot and mow that. You built it, you maintain it. And I like to see the same thing, for safety reason, that's what I like to see for that, if this town will let you do it.
Didn't you say last time you were here that that's where you wanted the entrance? Or you thought, you thought it was best?
Well, you had, you had, you had three there, you had that fourth one right there by my sister's property. And that's where I've been going in and out, and that's a big problem. So you, they eliminated that one and hooked it there. You know, I mean, you can't just look at something today and approve it. You gotta think about it.
Yeah.
You gotta study it. Okay?
Not doing anything today.
I know that. I'm just, this is where we should make suggestions, right? Is that what this is for?
This for.
Okay.
We're listening.
Unfortunately, those two houses that you got on the north side of that four, they're going to be wet. Is that in, little indentation is caused by the power line. When they built the power line, they came out there and got stuck on my grandmother's property at the time, and opened up springs. And that's where that comes from, that wetness. And there's water that runs all the way to that creek. Because when I mow that, I've got water on my wheels, no matter what time of the year it is. Other than that, just don't pollute my creek, please. You know, you can move that, you know, you own the triangle right down there anyhow. To the bottom of that pitcher, there's a little triangle piece that gets mowed. That's the property line for Rinaldi and you guys. Okay? Anything else you want, you want to ask me? I know quite a bit, so do these two guys behind me.
And how?
Yes, ma'am.
Valentine. That's the same creek that goes-
I won't be able to hear any of this, I'm sorry. I won't be able to type this.
It goes through and it ends up down at Fishers and the Undercourt Creek. It starts up in the hill by Pickren's. And it goes all the way through. And no, it does not freeze, and no, it does not dry up. I know my time's up. Anything else? You guys got any questions for?
To be clear, then, um, that-
Can I go over there and point?
No, no, you're okay. The, the driveway for the whorehouse, the four houses-
Hey, no, no, wait a minute. You're getting rid of that with that new Delta Sonic, uh, car wash, because that's where the mafia came to kill everybody, okay? Down at Wilson's 45 Motel. Now, what else you want to know about this Town of Victor?
Oh, my. So, the drive, the, the-
She didn't write that down.
The change they made for the driveway for the four houses-
Right.
Is an improvement-
It's an improvement.
From last time, but it's not gone far enough, in your opinion?
I don't think so, for safety reason.
Okay. It's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, like I said, you know, we had time to think about it after I saw the plan. And I've been thinking about it. Same thing with those other two houses, bring that back out to that other driveway. Because you, you know, going into that driveway now where the house is, it's a death trap.
Yeah, I drive school bus down through there, so I, I know how fast they go.
So do I.
Yeah.
They might turn, they might be 40 miles an hour at High Street, but time to go by my house, and it's not very far, they're 60 miles an hour.
They get a good head of steam.
And they're still hauling all the way around, and I hear it at their house.
Yep.
Could, could you indicate one more time where the, you said there was a wet area?
See where that indentation is? For the two houses to the north? Yeah, right there.
Mr. Rose?
Okay.
There should be a pointer, right? Yep.
Okay.
And you can, yep.
There we go.
Okay, so-
Right there.
Well, there's, there's-
See, there's my sister's property line.
Okay.
Goes up through there. Goes that way, too.
So the wet area is that wood area?
Right there.
Okay.
It's all little trees. It's all wet, because right in there, they buried the big equipment when they built that power line. Okay? And this lot right here, my sister's, has always been wet. And right about there is a spring, and the house that's there kind of built on top of it. But my father always had a drainage ditch down through there so he could work that lot.
Okay, I was just curious.
And Mr. Benson had to pull the tractor out one time for us.
And Norm buried the tractor?
Norm buried the tractor, yes.
So that's indicated as a wetland area on their existing conditions map, so that makes sense. Okay.
Well, like I said, when, when I come around here mowing, it's all wet there. And I know it's wet down here when I, when I make my turn.
And it's protected by a conservation easement?
Well, it never used to be, okay? Until they put that power line up there. This here is all nice and dry. There's no problem there. Okay? And then you got the creek right here. Creek right here turns, goes down there, goes across the road, goes there into my property. But it vents up here, and it goes up there. And like I said, it dumps out into a Undercourt Creek in Fishers. Anything else? I think I covered it all.
You're the one who told us about the potato last time, right?
Yep. That's Aldrich Farm. The one that built the barn and the other barn. So. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to, uh, speak?
Dave Palmer, lived on Valentine Road before I was born. Point oh, okay. That driveway there is a death trap. I suggest, because I know, why don't, why, suggestion, why don't one of you drive up the Freund's house and pull on the driveway, and back, back out and head to the mall? Look in your rearview mirror, you will have a semi on your butt. You will see nothing but grill at 50 miles an hour. And he'll be scared, too, because he didn't expect you there. I had been, I had parked in that driveway and picked up cans around that corner. You pull back out, next thing you know, somebody's right there. I also had the same problem with my house. I pull out of my driveway, and there's nothing coming. I pull out the driveway looking in the rearview mirror, there's a car right there, doing 60 miles an hour. We have kids on these crotch rockets coming around that corner, the knee about that far off the road. It's a racetrack. It's a cut-through from 31 to 96. So why don't, take that driveway there and move it down to here. It's, there's a creek there, yes. Put a sluice way in. He's, just a sluice way to develop or don't mean nothing. And the house, I don't believe he's gonna keep the house. I think he just hasn't told you he's going to tear it down yet. Because it's an old Sears and Roebuck house. Original house blown down. My parents told me that. It's just, by the way, this here, that whole lot, that's six, eight feet, the low grade of the road. What do you think? What are you going to do with that? It's this six feet lower than the road there. How is he going to fix that? Going to pu- pull down the hill? You've got to raise that some. By the way, why was two pork tests taken? Is somebody the-
What's that?
Fudge one? It was two pork tests taken in that lot. One with a backhoe and one with a shovel.
You have to do at least two.
Okay. It just, that's, that's wet. I've seen Norm, Norm tried plowing, um, Jeanette's once and buried the tractor. Another such as question. One of those lots is 1.58. Isn't it supposed to be minimum two?
Isn't it supposed to be minimum two on Valentine Road?
I can clarify that. The answer is no. The minimum acreage is not two acres. I will, I will look it up.
I think it's two. And he's got a 1.5.
They're thinking residential. It has nothing to do with the-
Right. The, the density, the, the overlay density, there is a 0.5 units per acre, which could equate to...
Oh, oh.
Let me look it up.
There are three units on that side, two units.
That gives you the yield of the, of the entire parcel, but then you can play around with it.
How about some of you people taking a ride up the Freund's and pulling the driveway?
I've got the same problem on Modoc Road. Only this time of year, it's snowmobiles.
I used to, that used to be all motorcycle and snow bear trails. Now it grows houses.
Mm-hmm.
Someday, you're going to wonder why you can't feed yourself, because all the farm land grows houses.
I know. What are you going to do?
Regarding lot size, let me just clarify for everybody so that it's understood. In, uh, chapter 211 of the Victor Town Code, zoning, right?
Yes.
I'm, I'm looking at the current zoning code. Yes. Schedule two, in the resident, in the R2 zoning district, which is where this property is located, the minimum lot size for lots with public water only, so these, these homes will have public water, they will not have public sewer.
Right.
The minimum lot size is 33,560 square feet, which is less than an acre.
Oh, jeez. Ah, man. So you look out your bedroom window and you look in the next guy's bedroom window.
But, so, and they also, they're complying, they're also complying with the residential overlay district of .33 units per acre on the north side of Valentine Road and .5 units per acre on the south side of Valentine Road. They're compliant with the zoning and-
Okay.
With regard to lot size and density.
How about going back to the planning board and moving that driveway to the Freund's house, to the other side of the creek? And they're going to tear Freund's house down, they just haven't told you yet. Haven't, haven't spent the money for a demolition permit.
I'm sure they'll take that under advisement. Won't you?
That house back there is not going to want to look at the, our house. They're going to, you know, multimillion dollar houses, they don't want to look at that one, I'm sure.
The what?
It would be, and I, I am, agree to hoping somebody will fix up the barn. We need to, we need to save Keisel's barn. It's about ready to go. It's the same barn.
They can't rip the barn out without, uh-
Be nice to save those two barns.
At the town historian and say, "Okay." I don't think she's going to do that.
No. Because they already have, you know, the sheds all fell in just the other week.
Hmm. We're in the early stage. They'll be back again.
What date?
Um, I don't know. It's up to them. It's our next meeting.
March eighth?
Yep.
Okay.
You're going to do next?
I hope so.
Okay.
My name is Glenn Thon, T-H-O-N. I live at 7112 Valentine Road. I've been there 60 years. I've been in this position before. About five years ago, I made an application. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I'm getting a little ring back.
Lucy tried to turn the volume up so you don't have to strain yourself.
About five years ago, uh, my wife and I came to the board here to subdivide 20-some acres behind our house. I was told that I could got, get, I could not get water supply to part of my property, because of, the town could not give me 50 pounds pressure. Okay? It's the same thing that's in, same water lines, it's been in there for years. In order to get four houses behind our house, I had to put in a roadway of 15- I had to put in a roadway of 1,500 feet. Built to town specs, as you remember, and when the fire truck got stuck and the house burnt down, help me with the road. Fishers, Fishers, Mr. Fire truck got stuck and the, the water in the pond went dry, they lost the house. So I had to put in water for those four houses back there. I wanted to put the main line going across Valentine Road back to a cul-de-sac or a turnaround so the fire truck could get back in there. It's the only way they would let me build the houses. You won't have a fire problems as much as I had supposedly. My, my have to put one house on four acres. And I was told that three acres was the minimum. So have our laws changed for the developer? And the people that have been paying taxes for 60 years are getting hosed? I feel that I was misrepresented by the town if you're changing things after somebody started a division. We have room for 24 acres up on our, our top lot. They wouldn't let me build there.
I wasn't here five years ago, so...
Were any of you here five years ago?
I was.
I was.
I was out.
So nobody's gonna take the blame for it, huh?
I can, I can confirm for you that the zoning requirements for the residential two zoning district, well, and the residential three zoning district and the residential one zoning district, the dimensional requirements have not changed since I have been working with this board, which has been more than 10 years.
More than 10 years?
Yes.
Okay. Then, you, okay. I wanted to put the roadway to the specification that the town calls for. I did that. I wanted to put a water line back to that turnaround or cul-de-sac for the fire trucks to get in there. This is shortly after they lost that house and everybody was happy about that. When we went to put the water lines back to the houses, Monroe County Water came down and said, "You can't put a fire hydrant back there." I said, "Why?" "We want you to have three separate services going back there." Why do I had, why did I have to do that? When I was told I had to have fire protection back there. They have no fire protection back there. They're gonna have to run a, a fire truck up to there and then back from a hydrant that's back on Valentine Road to fight the fires. Things aren't, things aren't running square, I don't think. I don't think the property that they wanna develop there is gonna have, have, have enough room for their septic systems because they aren't going to have to have raised beds because there's so much water in there.
So we've, we've looked at the information, we've, we witnessed the soil testing. The town engineer witnesses soil testing and to my knowledge, and, uh, Mr. Marks, please correct me if I'm wrong, there is not a need to have a raised bed septic system. The conventional septic system will fit on this property and the soils will accommodate a conventional septic system, that's my understanding. It's, it's shown by the, the soil testing, I mean, that, that information is probably available here at the town hall, that if you'd like to see this, the soil test information.
I, I was there when they took those tests. It was the middle of summer.
For this project?
Yes. This, it was...
When were the soil tests done for this project, Brendan?
I think it was late summer. Oh. Hang on. Over. Oh, November 30th. November, November 30th.
November 30th is when the soil tests were done, right?
Yep.
Okay, I, I might be off on a few day, a few days there, but it still is a wet lot. It's a wet lot. The creek is right there. I don't think you could down four foot right now and get any dry land. And it's gonna cause somebody else problems later on because if those septic systems fail, it's gonna go down the creek. I would suggest, it's costs a lot more money. But they have all those lots that they, they wanna put in there to have city sewers.
The what?
City sewers.
With the Rinaldi there?
Yeah, there is.
What?
Just before you get there. Runs in front of my house. My property line to High Street looks onto the Valentine.
Make them put sewers in.
Got the septic, you got the pump station down there by the creek on High Street.
Well, that's up to the town board, that we can't do that.
So they're not, yeah, that's, the other thing is they're not in the Town of Victor's consolidated sewer district.
Well, make them do that in order to build those houses.
Well, um, they don't necessar- it's, it's up to the applicant, it's up to the design professional if they wanna enter the sewer district and, and construct additional sanitary sewer. Um, they could propose that, but they don't have to. Right? If there's, if their soil tests are telling us that, um, you know, they can accommodate private, individual, subsurface, uh, septic systems. You know, if they wanna pers- if they wanna pursue it that way, that's fine. The design, the, the town's design and construction standards allows for that.
I'm telling you now, you better do it. You're gonna have to, and the, the density is so, is so close.
How was, how, how is this project violating the town's density requirement? Because I'm just, I'm, I just don't see it. The way, the way I've looked at the project, they are meeting the density requirement.
Talking about three acres per house. That's what he was told.
Three acres per house.
That's what he was told when he did that. And now, what are your density? Changed all that.
The density requirement has not changed. I don't know who told you that you needed to have three acres per house, but that's incorrect.
Got a letter that says I gotta have three units on the north side, two units on the south side. And the development behind me only needed one unit, which was on the widest property, which is what Somerset, they got 63 homes up there, 75 acres.
They're on sewers, up there.
They're on sewer, they're on water, they had to put a water tank by the Gulf course because the one on Baker only had 11 pounds of pressure to come up that hill. So they put one over by the Gulf course. They hooked in, they got sewage, put a new pump station, a double one by the creek on High Street. It's down from, uh, New York BP. Pump there, the farm team. And you got another one on High Street, or on Gillis Road to help it along too.
So if we wanna, I guess, if we wanna resolve that issue...
I don't care if you resolve it or not. But I don't want to spend my tax money repairing something that you should have had the builder put in.
Okay. Um, just to refocus on this particular project, and I understand that you have, you've had valid comments towards this project. Um, if we wanna resolve that issue of your, of maybe understanding or interpreting that you were told that you needed to have a three acre lot, let's talk about that at another time at the town hall and, and deal with this project that we have before us tonight. Do you?
I think that if you allow them with the density that they want, with the safety hazards that everybody here has tried to tell you, you're opening up the Town of Victor for lawsuits and for a lot of problems with people running off the roads, people getting hit. I've already talked to the highway superintendent to get the road down to 30 miles an hour. We, we have clocked them, the state police have clocked them going 60 miles, 70 miles an hour.
What do you think, you think we're gonna say this, P. Lim is gonna stop this?
John Wilson was, John Wilson was supervisor of Town of Victor years ago. And he said, "The only way you can slow those cars down is you go plow a furrow across the road." And he meant it. He meant it. Do you, do you remember when Valentine Road came off of High Street on the... See, I got somebody shaking his head, yes. High Street on the north side of Valentine Hall? I do. Because I was living there.
1959 it changed it.
And, and they, they...
I got pictures.
Before my time.
Sure.
I've been there longer than he has.
Well, I've been...
I remember your diapers though.
I know it.
Been here since 77. It's only been 44 years.
I, I, I don't come to complain to this place. I live here, I pay taxes here for 60 years.
All do.
I'm just trying to make it safe.
But we're trying to tell you, you're relying on some tests that were taken. But I'm telling you about the experiences of seeing cars over the, over the shoulder there in the mud in all kinds of year, all kinds of weather. They can't mow the grass in there sometimes. The, 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 the machines, the tractors can't go in there to mow the grass.
This public hearing will remain open, we're not...
All night?
Well, no.
Hey, come on, I wanna go home and have some supper.
The next...
You eat all the time.
Next meeting, it'll still be open and you can, you can come back and speak again.
Good evening, David Wright, 33 Ketchum Street, also chairman of Victor Hiking Trails. Uh, I wanted to, uh, know if the board received the letter uh, before the, uh, sketch plan review from Brian Emelson, Parks and Recreation Director. This was, uh, he dated it December 16th, so you got it before the January 11th meeting. But, uh, it was, uh, concerning a request for a sidewalk and I, I hope that the board would be able to make the arrangements for that. Um, I know that, uh, that doesn't say it, but I know to the left is north, so I'll refer to the properties that brought up to the north property line. Uh, they had a butts with the, um, High Point property, Mr. Rinaldi. Uh, Mr. Rinaldi has been, uh, very generous in allowing us to have trails on his property. And the Seneca Trail goes through the western edge of his property. And we think that the, the elevation and the wooded area on those three properties to the north could afford a, an opportunity for these residents as well as other residents to have a, like a loop trail up at the top of the hill. It would be out of sight from the houses that it would be built down in the, in the lower area. Um, but we, uh, we, we, Victor Parks and Recreation as well as Victor Hiking Trails see that as an opportunity, but we'd like to do a sidewalk to see if it does make sense or not. Uh, maybe the slopes are too steep, maybe, uh, maybe there's too many woods, but, uh, we'd like to have the opportunity to walk it with the developer and see if that is a, an opportunity for a trail.
Think we can set that up, yes?
They can coordinate with Lisa, yeah.
Get Lisa Bouton to call. And, uh, she'll see about it.
Okay.
Yeah. Come on.
I agree with...
I appreciate it. You probably hiked up there when you were a little boy.
We still do it. No, no, just stay right there, please.
You wanna come up and speak so they can hear you? Lisa, Lisa needs to be able to hear you.
No, it's, it's, it's the recording that has to hear.
Lisa wants to record your words.
Okay, do you know where the highest point in Monroe County is?
I thought it was Hopper Hills, but you're gonna tell me something different.
Definitely.
It's Hopper Hills.
And I know where the geodetic survey marker is.
Hopper Hills.
It's up on...
It's my father's property, the marker's right there.
Baker Hill, Baker.
Baker Hill Road.
I'll show you the marker.
Yep, see?
Oh.
Okay, now, from that marker, you can go all the way down the power lines, up and down, up and down. Sometimes they mow them for you.
Yeah, sometimes.
I wonder if it goes there.
And then, and then you can go all the way down to the new road that goes up Rinaldi's property up there.
Correct.
Yeah. I hope you can get those first.
We gotta, we gotta talk to, uh, Mr. Rose's sister. Maybe.
We can work that out.
Just like I do.
But, but she's a little stubborn. But we used to have snowmobiles.
Snowmobiles. Trails.
And we used to, snowmobile, on Sundays there, we'd pick up Mr. Kiesel who couldn't drive a snowmobile well. We'd take him along with us so the kids, he got into problems, we could help him out. And we had all trails up there.
And did you go to County Road 9?
Sure.
That's, uh, where the monkey run trails are.
Who do you think...
That's why Valentine is Monkey Run.
Who do you think started the monkey run trails?
We did it, snowmobiles.
Well, your snowmobiles, that's right.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. and Mrs. Ryan, we're fortunate, we were fortunate that they allowed us to hike on those old snowmobile trails.
Yeah. Well, they won our, not for our property, we didn't say anything about it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, step up.
I didn't, I really didn't expect to speak, but I'm from Historic Valentine, Victor Historical Society. Catherine White, I'm president. Um, I would just like to say that firstly, that our concern is the barn as well. And if it comes to condition, we have resources, if they wanna contact us, who are, can ace the barn. I don't know if any of you are aware, but there was a barn, um, it's on High Street before Gillis. I don't even live here and I know all the, all the roads. And it was apparently, it's across the street from two of our board members. And they thought they were getting some restoration and fix-it work and it was a disaster. And they brought someone else in who aced it. And I know it's competition, but they were Amish, okay? But they know barns, they, they do it blindfolded. They completely reversed all the actual damage that was done by its exterior, whatever. And they put our two roofs on and we're very pleased with the work. And, um, just for the record, it isn't, metal roofs are no longer the heavy type of roof that you think, they're a fraction of the, the weight of average shingles. And that's one of the considerations we made because it isn't historic in our time profile. But farmers, that's why barns are still up. The ones you see that are still standing usually have metal roofs on them. So we're looking at a long-term thing for us. But however, we were very pleased with the work that these individuals did so that if it comes to that and they want somebody to even look at them, and we have other resources, in Tully, New York, there is a barn restoration outfit, but that's extremely, you know, high-end. But there are things available and we are concerned about the barn, lack of barns in, in all the areas. Finger Lakes everywhere. You see them start to drop and open up and that's the end of them and then a scrapper comes and takes them out. And, you know, if there's a point where they can, where they still have their sides on them and they can still be worked on, I mean, I know the wood is valuable because it's chestnut, it can be any number of really woods you don't see anymore. But, and, and for us, it was cedar, our building is cedar, it's, we can't get it anymore. It's exorbitant. We have a choice of cypress. One of our issues is that we may actually use a building that's being raised in order to replace some of our boards that are in good, another building in very good shape that we would be able to accommodate and have that building live on through us if, if we could find that. Otherwise, we're looking at cypress, milled cypress. So I'm just saying, it, if it's at a certain stage and it... So I'm just saying, it, if it's at a certain stage and it can be, and the, and the owner of, the new owner wants to go with it, we were very happy with, with, with the Amish work. And they, um, they have to be transported up here, but they're efficient. I mean, like way efficient, they will work in the timeline and then they're done. So just on the record that we, we would appreciate some consideration for the barn as well. And, uh, we walked through the other barn that they were talking about. I don't know if you people understa, it, it's, it's an, you gotta be in the mindset. We went down to the back, now the barns are set so that you can walk out, like what we would call a basement, and then you drive up on the road level. So we went down in the back and unfortunately, we lost the photographs. One of our board members passed away and his photographs are gone, we can't find them. But I don't know if any of you know what cribbing is. So we had a gentleman who's now ninety-six go with us at the time, we, and he played in the barn when he was a kid. So we go down in the basement part and there's the two stalls for the horses. And there's the crib marks. Now, horses that are tethered, these weren't box stalls, they were smaller. They will get bored and they start chewing. So all of that was, the barn was telling us a whole lot of things that if you didn't, we just, you just have to know, and you start looking and you say, there's something, when, just another example, when they were working on the road across from us, um, and on High Street, and I went over to take photos, standing there shooting the pictures of the front porch, and I looked down and there's this right angle thing in, in the dirt, right in front of my feet. I said, "That's not natural, what the heck is that?" So I dug it out, it's an axhead. So there's stories all over these things, I mean, it's like they, they're very rich if you're looking for the right story. And I, these are our neighbors, and we go back as far as they do. And the stuff where we're working on now with, Victor was one of the premier Grange sites in New York. And it was, the Grange is why you're looking at Valentine. The tenants of the Grange were introducing farmers to culture, arts, music, all of the things that you see in Valentine Hall, we're beginning to find out were part of this expanded idea of what the Grange was trying to bring to the American farmer, including fighting the railroad because they were arbitrarily charging anybody, the going rate for wherever they were. And the Grange took them to the Supreme Court, which was a kind of a cool story too. But anyways, I digress. Just if you want any help with the barn, just let us know and we'll be happy to help you, and thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
You recognize this?
Oh, come on.
You're gonna get tired of me. You know the real name for Valentine Road?
Real name?
The real name.
I already said it.
It's in a lot of the deeds. Monkey Run.
Oh, there's...
You know why, you know why they called it Monkey Run?
No idea.
Because the people that farmed there were monkeys, monkeys. The kids were off picking up potatoes, it was very heavy in potatoes in this area. And they called it Monkey Road because all the kids were out of school picking up potatoes, Monkey Road. It's true.
Believe it. Okay. I think we've had enough for tonight. Gonna be on again next meeting, so feel free to come back and address the board again.
Move to adjourn.
Hey, Joe, move to adjourn. Seconds? All seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
I wanna go get our beer.